Yo, uh, this is a cool game. So... Welcome to, I guess, my first BlazeBlues stream, um... I've been playing this a lot the last couple of days, oh well, it's the game I've been playing the most the last couple of days, I've been playing a lot. But I am very interested in, uh, commentating this game. Uh, which means I am going to have to learn more of it, and... The way we're going to do that is, uh... By remembering to notify people on Discord first of all. I apologize if there's noise, we are doing construction in my house currently. Life is weird. Copy this link. E B C F. So... We're gonna be doing this like I did it for Multiblood. I didn't do this on stream. I did this while watching Dave's end and fucking around with myself. Uh, I really enjoyed this document and I think it is a good thing to exist, uh... So if you wanna hear it isn't chat, um... They're probably able to hear that, that's not a problem. But... So we're just gonna go through, we're gonna take this at a very surface level thing, cuz... Uh... Genuinely, I don't know what exactly I wanna... I- I can't do everything, I like, so I'm going to focus on what is the character's drive? And what is the character's special moves? That is like two things we can focus on. Um... So we can just like do the tutorial and just go down the line of the character's specifics. So let's start with Ragnar. And also we are going to be... Cross-referencing with the, um... Blast Blue Wiki. So we get the full names and the like... Moves, names and stuff. Khan's high-risk moderate reward is really funny. Um... So what is his drive? So actually we should start off with like... Ragnar the Blood Edge. Drive. It called Soul Leader. Yeah, I would have done it like this and then... Okay. Any attack done with D will steal health from the opponent when it hits them. So all Ragnar's... D attacks steal health from opponent. Okay. This works on... This works even on block. So barrier naked. Uh, combos with multiple D hits... Deal more health. Let you... Let you use those D attacks. Bouting game. Hey. Excellent. That's his drive, lovely. Overdrives. Oh, Ragnar's overdrive is called Bloodkane idea. Bloodkane idea, that's really silly. Uh, in this joint saying the life should probably just sort of, it's auto-increase damage and range of... Overdrive. Bloodkane. We're stealing this wholesale. Thank you, Doslu. Yeah, now let's get the specials. We might also check the strategy, but that may be for future me, cuz... It's gonna have to be deeper than just watching this thing here, so... Okay, what's the first one? Hell's Fang. Okay, uh, that's a dash attack. How do we, uh... Hell's Fang. Two one four. So up with D. Alright, fuck, commit dashcan, cool. Next move. Gauntlet Hades. Overhead attribute. Oh, I guess this is like an overhead. Okay. Oh, is that like kind of a Wrecked Tatsu thing? Gauntlet Hades, uh... Two one four. I should also add, yeah. Okay. Yeah, overhead. Jumping. Okay. Yeah, blocking. Ten override. Excellent. That's cool, that's a move. Damage. Oh, that's only in the air. Okay, that's- that's weird, that's laggy. I don't even know what to call that. Okay, a real combo and... Okay, okay, that's- that's actually, okay, that's interesting, um... A two one four, right, that's... D. Air combo and, uh... Follow-up sacrifices. Okay for damage. Step and corner. Um... Raid. It could be... An overdrive D follow-up can be dashcan, so... Yeah, all these fucking characters have a lot of moves, eh? Yeah, we're probably not covering all, uh, characters today. But, um... Bloodsized. That's a... That's a big fucking jump in. Ah, okay, plus on block. Okay, okay, that makes sense, um... We needed the name, Jacob. Bloodsized. Two one four D. Corruptible, there we go. English is weird, uh... Uh, air version... Is useful. Well, that's just what we are. The, yeah, it's only the ground version that ground bounces. It, okay, both. Next move. Okay, so that's just this projectile. I like that it's Dead Spike and not Death Spike. It's- it's... It's a spike that has perished, it's not a spike that will kill, which is really funny. Oh, it can be plus on block. Uh, that's two three six D. Dash. Pressure reset projectile. I feel like that's fine. Plus on block. Pressure reset projectile. Excellent. Next, oh god, this is, uh... This is a TP. Wha- That's a fucking weird move, okay, um... Infernal divider. Now, six two three. Yeah, okay, Wrecker. Yeah, okay, DP with Wrecker follow-ups. Raid. Four. Four X. Pick. Which is... Okay, two one four D. Okay, that's a complicated move. So... Faster startup on D version. Oh yeah, attribute, so this is, uh... Body invincible. Okay, I assume that's the whole fucking thing. Okay. It's full invul, the D version. No, no. Version is invul. D. But D is faster. Has, uh... Deals more damage. And... Just make sure I don't make noise for the people making noise, but you know, nice. That's likely, life steal. Raid. Is K- or not carry or combo extension. Hmm... It is really X. Okay, so what's the difference? What is an X? It's just a variant way of spelling X, okay. Yep, that's cool. Pick is, okay. Lovely. I think that's actually basically. Okay. That's, uh, that's that. That's a very complicated move, but a very cool move at the same time. Damn, okay. So not over yet, just picks up the opponent? That's kinda dank. Uh, that's a really cool tool. I- I wish my character had that. Well, I mean, I just wanna like call, like that in combos. Oh, it's not over yet, yeah! Oh, that's really rad. Yeah, tha- that's basically it, um... That's really rad. Oh, you should. It can be dash. Okay, the conicizer is overdrive, like, um, distortion drive. This is just Tyrant Rave. This is actually just Tyrant Rave. Uh, yeah. Six, three two one four, six D. Tyrant rave, but gains health. Perfect. And next one. Okay. I did tripped, um... Okay, so invul. Sixteen frames of an nineteen. The f- Why do you give them these cool-ass names? That's really, I love it. Two one four, two one four D. Exceed Excel, uh... I assume that's also what we're getting next. What? That's so fu- wait! Does it like at least is a projectile or something? No, he ju- haha, that's so stupid. No, he ju- (laughing) That's so stupid! I'm just gonna like give the name here, cuz it doesn't really matter. I just wanna know what it's called. Cuz I want to be able to call it, uh, Black Onslaught. Oh no, this one is kind of underwhelming remove correctly. Yeah. He just takes a side and kills. Astral heat. Black Onslaught. Two one four. That should be Ragnar. Yeah, homies, we done a Ragnar. I'm gonna be happy with that. That's all we need to know about Ragnar. That's actually Bolt Soul Leader. Boy, that's a... What's the next one? Gen. Well, Gen comes before R in the alphabet, so we're gonna... The last name, yeah, yeah. We should actually also overdrive, give that bolt. Is Raito, which means frostbite. I like having the Japanese name there, so that's cool. Has various D attacks and abilities can freeze the opponent when they hit. When the opponent is frozen, they are unable to take any action for a short period of time. Since they are defenseless, this allows them to continue his assault. The freeze duration differs depending on the attack and the opponent will fall automatically. I think we're just actually gonna do drive and overdrive... Until we get through the entire cast and then... Put in specials. Cuz I think else I'm not gonna be getting very far with this. Normal attacks that use D can freeze one time per combo, whereas special attacks can freeze up to ten times. Be aware that once these limits are reached, any further freezing attacks will put the opponent normal hits on. Uh, head and freeze the opponent with various D attacks. Okay. Eh? Oh! That's a cool move. I love that it's the exact same as the fucking nine, um... Ice thing. That's... Fine. Overdrive. E freezes opponents, main, uh... And... That also, yeah. One addition to D attacks, any of the attacks you... Yuki and Naisa such as C will also free. Oh, so I assume that's the sword normals? The limits of freezing during combos will become less strict. Eh... Uh... Okay, that... Go. During Zetto... Gen's... Normals and special... Lord Free. The freezing. General... Blowing... Pawns of new combo. Excellent, that sounds fun. Noel Drive. Like we are just... Let's go with the drives and like take that, cuz... These characters have a lot of specials. Um... Noel's gun lady, yes. Drive is called Chain Revolver. A B C D E F G H I J. Yeah, I can't do the alphabet in English for some reason. Um, uh, but Noel is after Gen. I have this cool... Ooh. Pressing various D buttons after... Press- pressing various buttons after D allows to string... To string together various combo attacks. Oh! This with the lever. Oh, sorry, I assumed they mean the stick with the lever. Can become the up to four times and can be cancelled in special attacks just like normal attack. Okay, so, yeah, rest of the normals are like physical. She enters... Chain revolver state. Gives her access to... Gun... Access to gun normals and specials. Can do four normal... Attacks after... State. This can... Wait. For drive. Chink. Okay. So... Where's our... Improves her drive moves in special. And, like... Improves her D normals. That's good enough. Good enough. We are... We want to kind of figure out as many characters as possible right now. Rachel. Lady from Prince. Hello, internet. I would like to... Rachel Alucard? Alucard. Silfeet. Oh, this is her. The Wind Lady. To summon wind in... Any of the eight directions. This consumes... Stucks of her... A Z just caught this... Silfeet gauge. And that's how to stay... Spelled it in the game, homie. I will listen to the... Uh... Silfeet gauge. Overdrive. Hellfright. I assume... Okay, um... This is just... Active her... Silfeet gauge... Recover was faster. And her supers... Are improved. Uh, it's like a standard thing, but it calls it out, right? I'm gonna assume... Worst case, it's, it's not like a big, uh, you know... Taokaka. Modern day world is a Taokaka. Dancing Edge, high-speed rushing attacks. During Dancing Edge, Taokaka will bounce backwards when hitting the opponent. Opposing six when she connects, she'll bounce forward instead. You can act immediately after bounce. Furthermore, from the beginning of Dancing Edge's rushing attack until the moment it hits Taokaka, put additional actions. A will immediately cancel attack, B will slip behind the opponent, C will execute a vertical jump, D will allow... Additional moves sticky kitty only on the edge of the screen. I assume that like stick to the wall. Dancing Edge ledge allows various rushing attacks. For expensive move count for each using D, keep in mind that cannot be used up to twice in D. Let's try using... Okay, this is a... Oh! That's just a fucking... Point? That's a, uh... Wow, okay, let's just, um... Yeah, that's, uh, modern, um... That's a real weird character. I kinda like it, though. That's fine. Go, go to dust, loo, homies. They are, they good. Almost becoming two. Okay, that's a fucking good name. I... Uh, it's not entirely becoming two, it's almost. It's not entirely becoming two, it's almost. That's, uh, what? That's F. Uh, okay, that's, um that's, uh, that's, um, that's fucked up. I don't wanna block that. Um. Say, uh. Uh, that's, uh say, that's a wild. Tegor. Okay. Now it's time for our boy. Is he actually just called Tegor? Like, on, I on That means I need to move him. Voltec baton. After applying magnum to various Dia attacks, takes a special attack like gigantic Tegor driver or veg catapult will draw the enemy to you. The attractive part depends on Dia attack. Also, in builds like atomic light, it can only draw enemies that are in Dia. Okay. Beware of overtime, but Tegor can extend the time if he hits with a Dia attack during perfect. Okay. No. That's so F top. What? That's so fucked up. That's Uh, that's F top. Tegor's seriously F top. I love it. Overdrive's voltec field. Oh, boy. No. What? No. That's so fucked up. That's F top. Man, Tegor's, Tegor's completely fucked. Tegor's incredibly broken and I love it. Is my kind of, mm. Lovely. After Tega, Lightchi. Lightchi is fucking wild, if I remember correctly. If I understand Lightchi correctly. Uh she's kind of like a stance character who stances that she has the staff sometimes and she can like take the staff and put in place in fucking teleport to them. Oh, yikes. Mattembo. Lightchi failing. Drive Mattembo. Mountain bow. Because again, both staff. I would assume Japanese. Again, I see that. Yeah, perfect score stick. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that, that is what I suspected. Um. They're just gonna bow like that. How the game's spelled with. Pressing the D button will place the rod, putting her in hand to in combat. Will send the rod flying as a projectile attack. The rod has two different trajectories set when placed. Standing D or 4D sets into vertical placement. Vertical placed rods have a curved trajectory and attack twice on the way there and on the way back. Crouching D or 6D settings spinning along the ground and is considered horizontal placement. A horizontally set rod will hit the opponent one tower, launch them into the air hit. Okay. A rod launched after placement these considerable projectile. If Lightchi gets an aiming attack while the rod is flying, it'll stop the attack and will immediately return to her hand. Okay. If Lightchi is hit when the attack while it's flying, the rod will fall to the ground and set itself again. Okay. Holy shit, her tits are bouncing up and down. Other fucking idol. Yeah. That's the vertical placement. This should be horizontal placement. Oh, that's really even cool. Yeah, we are just copying this thing cuz that's a complicated, um. Like, this, these mentions of moves that are like not necessary, like, um. Yeah, I feel like that is the best we can do here. The great wheel. Lightchi's automatically in hand-to-hand mode, can send the rod flying to attack in any way. Okay. This is, okay, we don't have to start, but we can just fucking eat it. Oh, the Oh, it's this thing. I remember that. Okay, okay. Okay, that's two. Um. That's good enough for me here. Like right now, we, we do not need to go deeper. Yeah, we Hey, girl. So, yeah, I, I need to be able to commentate this game somehow, right? So I need to figure out what the fuck these characters are. And like we started out doing all of Ragnar stuff, but that took fucking twenty minutes. So right now we're just figuring out what the fuck are drives, um. So that I can be like, oh yeah, this is Lightchi. She has the staff that she can use and then she can switch out so she doesn't have to start or Tegor fucking magnetizes people and drags them to him. You know, so they have an idea of what this character kind of does. Cuz so far my experience with this game is that all characters can kind of be summarized once you have an idea of what that drive is, right? I think that's definitely an oversimplification, but this is day three, you know? So that's how we're taking it. The fuck is Arakune? And yeah, I'm writing all the shit down cuz then I will actually remember it. That's how my brain works. What the fuck? So. Okay. It's very, right, yeah. It kind of seems to be the like design style of Blaze Blue, which is really cool. Okay, sorry, you have the crimson, you can curse people. No, no, this is fine, we will What the fuck is this? Yeah, yeah, exactly. What the fuck is this, homie? So we need to curse you. Okay. He like summons a homie. That will okay, and Okay, can we like, how do I how do we start this tutorial? Okay. Oh, gate, so, see. Thank you. I just completely didn't read the thing cuz I was like, what the fuck is this, homie? Um. Arakune is wild. Intersect neutral becomes chaos. Oh, sweet. Okay, so okay, so this is the curse down there in the bottom left. The curse effect actually, curse gauge above the heat gauge reaches max. Curse gauge. Yeah, he's kind of like a weird puppet character, it seems. Oh, well, let's say puppet character morphy, summon things to attack. While cursed. When released. Oh, so it's a negative edge thing. Okay, okay. Okay, okay. But yeah, no, I totally get that how it's like, once you get the curse going, your mix just becomes kind of silly. Okay, and D summons a homie from the sky. Man, Arakune is fucking wild. Okay, uh. Cool. How the fuck do we describe that? Um. Arakune. Yeah, which is sad because he seems rad as fuck. Um. But again, this is why we are reading through all this shit. Uh. Uh. What pronouns does Arakune move? There you see, that's what we're doing. Okay. But that is filled. Exactly, and I I think it's a very interesting thing to show of, um, one, because I'm more productive on stream, but also because it's a very different thing. He was originally a man. What? Blaze Blue is wild. Jesus. Uh, using B moves, um. I kind of adore that someone is still in love with him. That's somehow beautiful. Overdrive. Crimson Death. Oh, okay. If the curse gauge isn't filled, they will not be cursed. Yeah, it just kind of activates curse. Which, that's, that's nice. Excellent, uh. Dead Eden. Why does? Why did that work? Man, Arakune is wild. Boy, that's a, uh. Oh, Bang! That's that's that guy from Dragon Ball, right? Um. Bang, he has a last name. Shishigami. What? What the shishigami mean? That's funny. Um. Objectively the coolest character. Ah, Gora, okay. With bombos and F R K C. What? Oi, Furin Kansen baby! You can't. What? I have access. So this is kind of inspired by my multi-blood dog that I has for. That I did so I learnt the game, uh. Jesus. What the fuck, Bang? Driver ability is called Burning Heart. Using it has guard points, allowing him to, that's guard punch, yes. Uh, oh, so standing block, guard crouchable attacks. Okay, and crouch you block standing guard attacks, okay. So low crush and high crush. Jumping deal block all types of attacks. See if those are unblockable. Oh boy. When one of Bang's driver attack hit the opponent, the corresponding Furing Kassen icon will light up. Not only does this increase damage of the corresponding driver attack, it will also allow the use of. It will also allow the use of Ultra Technique, Hyper Shadow Step Strike. Oh boy. Let's try moving Bang around a little. Hit the opponent with each driver attack to light up the, okay. Okay. Ah yeah, and then deals more damage. I I kind of like that idea. Okay, no, that's kind of rad. Uh, Burning Heart. How the fuck do we describe this? Um. We're just straight up copying this, that's uh. Yeah, yeah, no. Yep, that's fine, good. Yeah, yeah, totally. Like, he's. What does he move? Wait. Okay. Yeah, yeah, no. Oh my god, they bounce? Oh, and now he's out. Okay. That's kind of rad. Okay, okay. Motherf- He loses the ability to block? Gives four air dashes. Oh, oh. No. They're fucking. What? It's not, I don't even. Okay, that's, that's really cool. That's the, yeah. Boy, that's. Okay, actually, what this is, um. Oh, that's so good. Okay, Bang Bang is kind of cool. I'll give that to Gora. That's, okay. It's when animation is just fucking jumping off and teleporting. Oh, that's so good. Oh. Hi Carl. Ah. I know that Carl is, okay, love to last name. A puppet character. Oh my god, it also gives me back. I love that it changes the music. That's like the small details that just, you know, chef's kiss, isn't it? Okay, so Nirvana will enter. Oh, that's awesome. Okay, Nirvana will enter active state by pressing the D button. Holding D and pressing back and forth, okay. While. Direction D will use corresponding attack up. Okay, glad I'm not playing this fucking guy, uh. Okay. Okay. So yeah, we just have like. That's just him. Okay, so. Ah. Okay, so I, you kind of have to change your position around her. Um. Okay. Yeah, I I realize that. Oh my god, this Antia is really dank. Okay. Okay, that's. Okay. Sudden rise high speed, yeah. Oh, no! Oh, that's so good. Okay, I kind of loved that. Um. Yeah, Carl seems very ifed up, and I cannot wait to see good Carl players. Like, I'm genuinely excited for that. Yeah, it cranked up the doll region, right? Yeah. Let's call control the doll. Sweet. Um, so yeah. The description here is kind of simple. Like, the description is kind of fucking simple, but like, what it does in practice is not. Overdrive, synchro, high speed, right? Uh, I shouldn't mention that. Control Nirvana. So I have the doll name in here, so that when. Yeah, he seems like it. Like, the re- we need the doll name in here so that when I'm commentating, I can open this document and be like, what the fuck is the doll called? What the fuck is the doll called? Um, I know. It's, it's like easy to understand how to use, I think is a good way of describing it. Um. Like, you can even choose not to move her, which is cool. Uh. Buffs Nirvana. Uh. Uh, no. X don't bring doll gauge and all gains access to. Other movie gains access to. Next to you. Good. Um. Thank you, Carl. Yeah, yeah. But you know, it's worth noting that he only has access to it during that. Like, I don't really care what it does right now. Hagaman is. No, that's Susan I'm thinking of. Don't actually know shit about Hagaman. I know Susan is like that weird guy who like, you have to unlock the special moves. An atome technique. That's. Game, this is not what atome means. Right. If I remember correctly, atome is. Essentially nodding the opponent so you can throw them. Um. Yeah. Sanjin atome technique, yeah, where he stops the. Is that Ukemi? No, that's atome. Uh. Standing D sixty and JD all the effective tactics standing guard. Okay. So this again, low and high crushers. I like that he doesn't try to counter the projectiles, he just like deals with, he's just, okay, we're invincible through them. Now, after successful atome, frames before and after the attacks have been cancelled. Hmm, we're gaming on Magatama gauge. Drive is a parry series. Sorry, his sword cuts projectiles.
Sorry, his sword cuts projectiles? That's way too cool. Hey, way too early. Still too early. Yeah, you kinda have to be. Okay, yeah, so they are frame one, but... Starter duration, okay. Oh, I wanna just cut projectiles like that. Okay, that's supremely cool. Okay, um... He can, he can take, that's rad, okay? Yeah, I assume that's one hell of a, uh, claim to fame. Akum and there we go. Drive, Sansion. I'm saving in Google Docs, just like by habit, and I don't need to. A blockable counter, so I could take out point, but, okay. Okay, I feel like I shouldn't mention the unique systems as well. Um... Yeah, that, it makes meter build, I felt like that was pretty simple to get. We're getting more meter, we can do stuff more, rad. Um, also, it looked like his meter is kind of collected in those eight like bulbs? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, sometimes simple is best. Uh... Counters. Yeah, resources are powerful as fuck. Overdrive, that's just cold. Ishin. Yeah. Oh. Uh... That's just unique systems. I don't know entirely how I should describe that, but that's fine. Projectile cutting. Uh, this gains him meter and... Creates... The full margin counter. That's, that's what we'll call it. That's good enough, um, we... We ain't big brain people, but we people. We very much people here at Jackson Stream Emporium, uh... New! Yeah, uh, sub lady, um... That's new 13, right? Cause 11 is like called something weird else, right? That's Lampda, okay, new. Oh, yeah, fuck? No, 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 I... That's gonna be at the end. Yeah, projectile zoner seems very much like, uh, the archetype. Um... Break letter, new. Hey, just, just fucking give it to me so I can copy it. Yeah, yeah, Lampdemono, yeah. Normally, Latin and... How do we spell? This fucking game is so fucking weird, I like kind of adore it. Uh, why are we in fucking 10.5? 11, thank you. Jesus Christ, okay. Oh my god, how do I do cursive and fucking... Roll L, okay. Oh, what the? Isn't it? That's control fucking, Jesus Christ, I for italic, okay. How you spelled game? I want the like actual game, accurate name, cause I find, cause I find using shield like that cool. Especially cause if I understand it correctly, she is like built as a scientific experiment and I feel it makes a lot of sense. Now, sword summoner. She summons swords and sends them. They act like projectiles can be killed, okay. Okay. I think I would actually really enjoy this lady. Cause I enjoy Hilda and Yuni quite a lot. Hide her. The original zoner throws swords, the original rush down hits with guns. Okay, no, that's actually kind of great. Last part seems incredibly wild and I enjoy it, the designs are... The designs are like teen, something that I would love in my teens and I am still my teens in my heart, so I love it. I, I don't think I can describe it better, um, most summon swords. Yup! Yup, tha- that's it, y'all! Uh... Okay, no, it just called unlimited drive. Uh-huh. Yeah! And that's rad. I'm gonna be guessing... They now deal chip damage. Yup, tha- that's what she does, um... The bucky. Uh, bucky. That's fucking weird, homie. Hold install, okay? Up to five charges, consuming one stock charge will use D versions of our special attacks. Okay. So, kind of like an extra meter for EX attacks. No! No! Why does that mimic a face expression? That's so good! Love it. Underground, D doesn't have a difference between standing, crouching, or jumping. The low altitude fills faster than high altitude! Port of a bubble immediately fill. Don't consent to hold D, you can move immediately, so make good use of this. Yeah, it's kind of like EX moves, fill the instill, then use the D version of special attacks, sanctus aequum. Okay, so... If I don't hold it, I can move immediately, but if I hold it, there's recovery. Kinda like Jin but stocks, yeah, yeah, yeah. The fact that it fills faster on the ground is ru- Wait, no, no. That's kind of thing. Uh... The bucky. I, I'm, okay, I don't know yet. I'm gonna guess that her overdrive either fills up her install meter... Or just makes it so that she doesn't need to use it. Automatically charges the install gauge at a set rate during OD, okay. One stock per second, okay, that's powerful. Charging will increase the rate, yeah. That's cancelling recovery shortened, okay. Wh- oh, she can cancel her moves into charging. What? It's just called second install? Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I can just fucking spam your shit, okay? Be charged using the D button. Stock two to div. I cannot get over the fact that it's just called second install. Install gauge. Excellent. Ahahaha! Ah, this game is so fucking anyway, I adore it. We can do one more character and then I need to go, which is probably taking a break more than it is, uh... Which, we'll leave it as Hasama. Who's a character that I actually kind of need to learn playing, um, because he seems like my shit. Um, Ashrael is bad, but... Hasama just reminds me of Axel so, so much. Ouroboros, that makes sense. Various D attacks hit a clone range, the bind time is short, but this time it doesn't curse, okay. While the chain is extending, A, B, and C, D can from pressing A, while these actually recall the chain, pressing B, C, and D will send it you towards the tip of the chain in different ways. Oh, so his Ouroboros, dark above the heat gauge, when this reaches zero, you can still attack with D, but you can't like teleport to it, okay. This is maximum of two when Hasama is on the ground. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly, that chain is why I wanna play with him. Okay, so that's like jumping back. And then I assume that can be cancelled into an attack, yeah. Oh, that's the side switch option. Yeah. Yeah, this is why I wanna play with this guy. 干嘛? Uh... Drive. Ouroboros, right? His Dean normals. Um... Uh, it's one two stock stat. In heal lanes, okay. Now I also know how to fight him a bit better. Knowing that it's limited in some way is useful. Overdrive is Shoumon Ganda. What? No, no, no. That's really effing weird! Shoumon Ganda. Uh... Um... Damn, that's a, uh... Okay, that's Hasama. And good, yeah, so... We're finishing this, we're going to the menu, and that's it for now. Might be back a bit later after I've had lunch, but I will see, um... Cause Jesus Christ, we went through a few characters today. Yeah, thank you, Gora, for coming by and like throwing shit at me, cause you're a smart person apparently. Boy, uh, that was a lot, but I also feel like I kind of have an idea of what all the characters we have looked at are, and now I have a document where I can look it up, so... Helps. It's gonna take a while to get through the special moves, but I think I'm gonna have to do that as well, um... And I probably won't do that in alphabetical order like I'm on the order of the fucking tutorial list, uh... I might do that in like a sense of how popular characters are. I might like actually go looking for TLs and then just take that from top to bottom. Yeah, 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 oh. Watch tournaments, that is ve- yup, I have been on that, that's quite important. Um, but yeah, currently this is more of my knowledge, but also just my knowledge as a player, so I have like... Okay, I'm up against a Bang, what the fuck is he going to try to do? I'm up against Carl, that's the doll, homie, right? And so that's good, and... Again, I don't know, I, to me, I usually like to know all of the available characters so that I have an idea of what I'm going into. Eh, I don't know, I, my brain likes having that information. But yeah, I'm gonna go, cause I have food that needs to be devoured, and I will... If I won't return, I'll be at multibot wanted later today, so that's at least fun. And who... Gora, ain't you competing later today in Wanted? I'm pretty fucking sure you are. Damn, it's gonna be good, can't wait to see some CL. Well, take care, beautiful people, love you.